Technically, one of our high school students passed away just before the start of the school year. And at this time, I just wondered if we could just pause for a moment of silence to remember this student, his family, and all of those in the community who are impacted by this significant loss. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from August 2nd and August 6th.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 2nd?
August 2nd. 2nd. Any discussion? Sorry, clarify, these are the meeting minutes from the vetos. Okay. So there being no discussion, got a motion on the table, 2nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Alright, this pass.
And then motion to approve the meeting minutes from the high school on 2nd?
For 2nd? 2nd. Any discussion?
Just a comment from the bottom of the page for the opening of the school plan. It's missing an occasion that Audra had mentioned, getting rid of the three feet. I don't think there's further discussion in it, but it should be in there.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Extention? Alright, this pass.
And then... Motion to approve the August 6th meeting minutes?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Do extension? Next up is our first of two public comments. Again, this is an opportunity for Guilford and Gilminton residents to provide public comment to us. In the interest of time, if we could try and keep our comments to a couple of minutes, that would be great. Oh, and please list your name and where your local address. Sorry, about to ask this again.
Hi, Kristen Marshall, Noblet Drive. First, I'd like to thank the school board and the administration once again for their tireless efforts in these strange times. I know myself and other parents have come before you in past meetings and have taken up precious moments commenting on the same issue. Tonight, we would like to try something different out of respect for everyone's time. We have come here to show you that we fully support the back-to-school plan that was presented and accepted. Tonight, I now ask all parents here who are in agreement to show your support by standing clear now. There will also be emails tonight sent by those unable to make the meeting, and for the sake of time, they have simply typed "I support the back-to-school plan that was accepted in August of 2021" in the subject line. I can only speak here for myself and only for the Guilford Elementary School, but I personally dropped my daughter and picked her up at least the last five days of school. And with a quick glance at the children and teachers, it seems to me that the vast majority agrees with the school plan, keeping the masks optional. School board, I hope this gives you the confidence that you need to stand your ground and to know that you made the right decision for the community with your plan and leaving the decision in the hands of the parents for their children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Here I am.
Kurt Weber. I live on Fox Cliff Road here in Guilford. I have two grandchildren in Guilford Elementary School. For those of you who don't know me, I sat on that side of the table for nine years. I was on the school board from 2006 to 2015. And I couldn't disagree more with the last comment. All through the last academic year, I was constantly praising the Guilford School District, Guilford School Board for keeping the kids in school, keeping control of the situation. At our Guilford Rotary Meetings, every time Kirk Peitler was there, I would say, "Guilford School District's doing a great job." I was very disappointed, along with my son and my wife, when we saw the back-to-school policy that... The school reopening, that masks were optional. The science is firm. It's irrefutable. Vaccinations and masks significantly decrease the transmission of COVID. You see that in states with low vaccination rates. You see that in states that have anti-mask mandates. And so, I can't understand why the Guilford School District and the school board would have made this decision. The kids wore masks all last year. They should continue to wear masks until, particularly in the elementary school age kids, can get vaccines and we can get through this pandemic. I don't think it really matters, in my opinion, what the state education board says, what area, other area, school districts are doing. InterLakes made the right choice. I think Guilford should relook this. It's not a matter of... Not an issue of rights. It's not an issue of politics. It's common sense, public health. It's all about being a responsible citizen and caring about your neighbors, and it's particularly important for school-age kids.
Good evening. My name is Skip Murphy, 9 Guilford Glen Road, Guilford. And I agree with Kurt. We should be following not just the science, but the actual data. I went to the New Hampshire Department of Education iplatform, and basically I wanted to find out how many total students are in K-12, and that number is 184,204. From the New Hampshire State Health Department data, they have a breakdown of those that have been exposed or had COVID-19. And the breakdowns are 0-19, 20-39, 40-59, 60-69, 70-79, and 80+. Since this is a school system, I would like to draw your attention to what they had from 0-19. Basically, there were 20,440 cases, 30 hospitalizations, and zero deaths. Now, hospitalizations for little children is never something to make light of, and I'm not trying to do this here. But I disagree with how they correlated the percentages, which was hospitalization, 0.15%. Really, it should have been done against the entire population of students in the state at 185,000, which then reduces the percentage hospitalized to rounding number, territory, You don't make public policy on rounding errors. You don't make public policy on individual anecdotes. And anybody who is studying public health knows and understands that. You have to do this in the aggregate, not on individuals. But let's go even further. The entire state population is approximately 1.4 million people. At this point, the cases of 0-19 drop to 1.46%. And regardless of what WMUR puts out every single night, this is a more realistic number to show how little this virus is affecting New Hampshire as a whole. The hospitalization of those 0-19 drops against that population of 1.4 million to 0.002%. That's not even a rounding number over rounding number ever. So I would ask that the optional mandatory... An optional mask policy stay in effect because the data is showing us that small children, younger children, are not affected the way that the rest of us adults are. In fact, I will be 65 in October. I am just starting to get into the danger zone. Using the New Hampshire's own data, you really don't start seeing a huge increase until you hit 80 years old or more, which then the deaths hit 20%. 70-79 is 6.51%. The overall rate of survival is 99.8% from this virus. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Podmore, and my address is 31 Murray Hill Road, Guilford. I'm also a 3rd grade teacher at Guilford Elementary School. And I would just like to give a full picture. There are definitely families who feel a certain way about masks, one way and another way. It's in our schools, and it's in our town, and it's totally understandable because there is science that somebody could bring about all those issues. Social distancing, maybe same thing, three feet, six feet, same thing. I would applaud our board for taking care of us. That's why we were able to be in school full-time all last year, and I thank you for that. I would ask you to reconsider the portion about contact tracing because, like this family said, there's strong beliefs and feelings and data about masks and social distancing. But I can't believe anybody can bring forward data and science that says it's a good idea to put a sick person with COVID in a room. And if we don't know that, we cannot protect our children or our staff. And some of the data that was being mentioned earlier is outdated. Though...
No, it's not important to me.
I didn't interrupt you, so I'd appreciate the same. So, it is data, but pre-Delta. And we don't have enough time with that and in this school year to have the science behind that. It is affecting younger population more than past variants. So I don't disagree that the data was accurate based on what's happened so far. Previous Delta, we've only been in school four days. It's not enough to know the data for the current variant. So I would just caution against that, and I know there's a lot of feelings and sometimes politics, and I don't want to be part of any of that, and I don't want that for my learners. I just want to keep them safe. I want to keep my colleagues safe. Because yes, they may not die, but we don't know the long-term effects of something. I have a coworker who got COVID last year, still can't taste anything nine months later. You may not think it's a big deal, but it is. And there are teachers that have gotten it from learners. And nobody's trying to give it to anybody. We're just trying to do the best we can. So if nothing else, please reconsider the contact tracing and quarantining because that's the only way we can make sure our kids are being safe. But also, I feel like it's the only non-disputable research-based... It's not a good idea to put somebody who could be passing COVID in a classroom in a small space with 18, 20 other learners. So I'd ask you to reconsider that portion in particular.
My name is Luke Brown. I'm on Old English Lane in Guilford. And if anybody doesn't know me, I work in the ER here. I've been here for a number of years. And I also have kids in the elementary school, middle school, high school. We also have a newborn at home as well. So we're sort of across the whole spectrum. And I don't disagree with what a lot of people have been saying. A couple of months ago, I was actually very hopeful of the fact that we could go back without masks and it would be totally fine. Recently, with the increased risk of transmission and the hospitals filling up, I think we need to reconsider. I'm actually a big fan of what InterLakes did because a lot of the transmission with masks or prevention of transmission with masks has to do with what the underlying amount of COVID in the community is as far as helping to protect people. So InterLakes has actually connected it to some of the guidelines, saying that when there's what they call the red zone as far as high transmission rates locally, then masks are mandated in school. And as the number of cases drops and goes into what they call the yellow or the green zone, then masks either become optional or can go away completely. And I think we need to reconsider something like that as well as far as middle ground. I can tell you that in the last year and a half, I mean, the reason I'm wearing a mask right now is that unlike people who may have been exposed, last night on my night shift, I was exposed to three people who were certainly COVID-positive, as well as another four or five that had state tests sent down that are COVID concerns right now. I've been exposed in the ER pretty much every shift for the last year and a half. I wore an N95 mask with face goggles, gullups, gowns for 12 hours without taking a break to eat, to drink. I shower and change clothes before I go home because I run the risk of exposing my family. The older kids are vaccinated, younger ones haven't been able to yet, and we have a 10-week-old at home now too that I'm scared of getting COVID to. In the last week, I've diagnosed daycare workers who worked for six days with fevers of 103 with toddlers. I've diagnosed newborn moms. The youngest I diagnosed in the last two weeks was six months old. We have... It is ramping up more now. We have more COVID cases that I've seen in the last month than at any time during this pandemic. Last year, when everybody was scared about it, you know, we were very good about masks and distancing. And I think it's... You have to be careful about masks as far as saying it is not 100% cured. It's not going to take away everything. At the same time, if people are masking as much as possible on a regular basis and doing some social distancing, there's no question that some of the risk of transmission is going to go down. I've also been very lucky that in the last 18 months, I've only had to admit two children or transfer two children to be admitted, one high school and one younger one. I've had nobody die that was under the age of 19. But we do need to also consider the fact that it's not just deaths or hospitalizations, that a lot of the data has shown that certainly kids can still transmit even though they're not getting as sick or requiring as much intensive care. One of the things that I worry about is, again, kids transmitting through the classroom and either having staff or families when I go home getting sick as well. So I certainly would support contact tracing as well. And again, I think that as we get it back under control, hopefully, as vaccine rates go up, as the number of cases in the community goes down, I think we need to be able to be fluid and try to... I would be all for having the kids out of masks. At the same time, I think the absolute most important thing is to have kids in school. And if you look at numbers in places like Texas and Florida now, they've had dozens of schools already closed down in the last two weeks, dozens of classrooms out on quarantine because of the number of cases. And if you look at the American Academy of Pediatrics website, even though the total cases have gone up, which is not surprising with kids who went back to school, the percentage of positive cases in kids under 19 years old has gone from 15% to 30% of the positive cases in the last two weeks. So in New Hampshire, we have been very protected, very sheltered, and I'm also more scared of where we are right now than at any time in the last year and a half. And I can tell you that of all of the people that I've seen in the last couple of weeks, having family discussions, talking about removing care, being intubated, there's a lot of regret and a lot of fear from people. And I think the worst thing that we could do is only be reactive and wait for somebody to get sick or die before we decide to change the rules as opposed to being proactive with a relatively simple thing that we can do that will affect transmission and decrease possible non-cases. I've looked at a lot of articles that people have sent me on some of the studies that have shown that masks are sort of causing harm or may not be preventing anything. There's a lot of flaws with a lot of these studies. It's really hard to do good studies with them. But it's fairly common sense that if most people in a classroom are wearing a mask, large droplet particles are going to be down. There are certainly virus particles that will go through masks and around them. It's not going to cure everybody. It's not that you can't get it with a mask. But if most people are doing it on a regular basis, it will decrease transmission. I think that's about all I have to say, other than the fact that it's also affecting more than just COVID right now. So in our hospital right now, it's pretty rare that I have to transfer people past Dartmouth, sometimes down to Boston on occasion. We now are keeping a list of 30 hospitals, and I had to call 28 the other day to get somebody who was actively dying down to Hartford, Connecticut to a hospital bed. I have friends who I did residency with in Denver who are taking patients from Texas by air because there are no hospitals open between Texas and Colorado. It's not just as simple as COVID. So it's a lot of downstream effects where COVID patients are being admitted, they have long hospitalizations, there's no bed turnover. We've also had a huge amount of staff in hospitals nationwide that have either become retirement age and not willing to take the risk of working in hospitals. And we've had a lot of people decide to leave healthcare overall in general after the last year and a half. So it's not as simple as just COVID causing, you know, a bed crisis, but there's a lot of these downstream effects that are causing it. And right now, if you come in with your trauma, a loved one is having a heart attack that needs a cath lab, there's a good chance they're going to sit in my ER for eight hours before they can get to definitive care, which should be under 90 minutes. I've had people who we would never have admitted at La Ponga before because they're too sick for us to take good care of them, and they're sitting in my ER for 48 hours before either getting admitted for suboptimal care or they are transferred to Hartford, Connecticut. And the more we can do to try to mask and prevent spread through the community, the more it's going to help everybody in general. Thank you.
Angelo Ferrugia, Wild Acres Road. So I heard that, and that scares the hell out of me, alright? But then there's the actual numbers. In the state of New Hampshire, there's 3,067 Scott Hospital beds. Number of beds in use, 2391. The number of COVID patients in those beds, 146. Number of ICU beds, 274. Number in use, 193. Number that are COVID patients, 36. Now, I listen to that. If I didn't know better and I didn't actually have an experience with this recently, then I might believe that, and I might be worried. The thing is, is that we know is, LRGH has had a total of around 70 COVID admissions. Not actually a total COVID admissions, hospitalization over the past year. What I can also tell you is, my youngest daughter recently broke her arm really bad. She was forwarded right over there. They had no problems seeing her. She was forwarded down to Concord, no problems seeing her once over. So unfortunately, what we're hearing is a lot from medical professionals that say disregard this study, disregard that study, listen to me. It's just not the truth, and we all need to stop listening to this. We need to do what's right for the kids, and we need to follow the science. And they are right. The science, the numbers, and everything else do not support what he's saying. Doesn't support what a lot of people are saying. So I encourage you all to just pay attention to the real numbers. You guys are doing the right thing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Peterson, and this is kind of low. This is just... I live at 33 Gunstock Hill Road here in Guilford. Over 40 years, there's been many randomized controlled trials that show that wearing face masks offer no benefit at all in reducing the spread of any upper respiratory virus. But if you want to wear a mask, I think it's unconscionable, unconscionable, sorry, to force any child to wear a mask because there's many ways that these masks harm children. First of all, they inhibit airflow in and out of the lungs. They've been shown to lower blood oxygen. They're intolerable for anyone with asthma or other chronic lung disease to be wearing. They trap carbon dioxide exhaled from the lungs, which is rebreathed, and that also raises carbon dioxide levels. Carbon dioxide rebreathing with close-fitting face respirator masks. It's conclusion from Journal Association of Anesthesiologists. Face masks trap exhaled viral particles in the mouth-mask inter-space, so says Russell Blalock, a neurosurgeon with 26 years of practice. Masks collect and colonize viruses, bacteria, and mold. There have been exploding cases of bacterial pneumonias correlated to people wearing these masks throughout the day. In Germany, a mask worn by a child for six to eight hours in school was examined to be contaminated with 84 bacterial colonies and four mold colonies. Wearing masks by children is a major threat to healthy development. Seventy doctors wrote an open letter to... In the Brussels Times was described what was seen in each of their medical practice: anxiety, sleep disorders, germophobia, increasing domestic violence, isolation, deprivation. Children's well-being is highly dependent on the emotional attachment to others. Wearing masks for long periods has been shown to increase the incidence of headaches and has also had negative effect on their work performance. Wearing masks for long periods put children at risk of psychological injury. This is tied to the lack of facial and emotional recognition. Voices of teachers and other students muffled through face masks makes learning more difficult, particularly if there is any hearing impairment. So what I say, dump the face mask. They are very, very harmful to children. Thank you.
My name is Dr. David Strang. I live on Cop Road in Gilminton. I'm a 1986 graduate of Dartmouth Medical School. I've been practicing emergency medicine for the past 32 years. I've served on numerous state boards and commissions, often as their chair, usually at the request of the New Hampshire Medical Society of which I'm a member. I want to congratulate the board for doing the right thing by making masks optional for children. In this part of the world, we practice what's called evidence-based medicine. If you're going to reconsider your vote and make masks mandatory, you need to show us the evidence on which you will base that decision. And the fact is, there are no credible studies from anywhere in the world that show putting a mask on a healthy person keeps them from catching a respiratory airborne virus. When I was a resident, we were rounding on an inpatient with tuberculosis. In other words, a patient with TB so severe, they were in the hospital. And being dutiful little residents, we started to put our paper masks on as we were about to go into the room. And the attending physician, the pulmonologist, looked at us with this incredible look and said, "What are you doing?" We said, "Putting our masks on." And he said, "Why?" And we said, "So we don't catch TB." He said, "Are you kidding me?" He said, "This thing is not duct taped to your face. There's gaps in the pleats." He said, "If there's TB floating around in the room, it's going to go right around the corner of the mask and into your mouth." He said, "If you want to use a mask to stop the spread of an airborne illness, put the mask on the patient." And suddenly, it dawned on us, yeah, quarantine the sick, not the well. On top of that, we're talking about putting masks on a segment of the population, children who are the least susceptible to the effects of COVID. The death rate of children with COVID is 1 in 2 million. That's .00005%. To give you some perspective, in the winter of 2017 to 18, in this country, 187 children under the age of 17 died from the flu, the common flu. Since we discovered COVID, which encompasses two flu seasons, six children under the age of 12 have died in this country, and every single one of them had concurrent leukemia. That's called a comorbidity. If you factor that out, no child in this country has died from COVID. So before you think about putting masks on children, you need to think about the relative risks, okay? There's plenty of risks that go along with putting masks on people. It clearly raises CO2 levels. There's lots of videos, you can find them on YouTube, that show that. So again, I want to congratulate you for making the right decision. Please do not go back on your choice and still make masks optional for our children.
Kathy Dubay, Spring Hill Circle. I know there's been a lot of talk about masks, but another thing that I think people should consider, and this is a fact, which I hope doesn't happen in Guilford, but last week at Belmont School, a teacher came into school very sick and COVID-sentenced and was told that if this person got a test and it was positive, then there would be protocol. If they decided not to get a test, nothing would be done. The teacher opted not to get the test. So just think about that. I mean, we're talking about masks. That's great. I, you know, I'm not going to say one way or another. I know what I want to do. If you don't feel it's right for your children, that's fine. But I would hope along with that decision that we're also looking at the other parts of the policy, and I'll admit, I'm not sure what the other parts of the policy are, but apparently the state guidelines or state recommendations, there's a lot of things in those that does not make it mandatory for schools to tell parents, to tell fellow teachers. Another fact, a coach had two stu... Another fact, a coach had two players that didn't show up for practice, did not find out from the school administration at all that these children had COVID. Rather, they found out from parents. So I just want to say that along with whatever other policies that you have, that there are some other preventive things being done, so we don't have a situation down the road that someone comes into school extremely sick, nothing is done about it, and then an outbreak happens.
I'm about to change the subject. And once again, good evening. Skip Harvey 9 Guilford Glen Road, Guilford, New Hampshire. Last meeting, I had asked the same three questions that I had been asking for over a year, and they can be condensed down to, where does this subdivision of the state get its power to do X, Y, and Z? And at that point, once again, I did not receive an answer. And I will say for all the folks that are here tonight that haven't been coming all along, I have asked verbally the questions, I have asked, I emailed these questions, and I have done right to nodes to get the answers to these. And each time, I have received the response pretty much as what you see the school board doing right now, which is remain silent. And at that time, I said, "Well, that was your last chance." So tonight, what I am holding is my lawsuit. It has been filed in Bellknap Superior Court. And when, as I said last time, I cannot compel you to answer here. I can compel you during deposition, during discovery, and when you are all on the witness stand, because all of you are personally named. Robert Gandomski, Gretchen Gandini, Cameron Thurston, Janine Onos, Kyle Sandborn, and Audrey Kelly. And SAU 73 as a business entity all on itself. I grow tired and I grow weary of elected representatives not being open, not being transparent, and thinking of themselves to be above their elected representatives. I mean, the constituents that put them in those seats. I am sorry that I've had to do this, but Gretchen, this is all on you. This was a lawsuit that didn't have to happen. All you had to do was to either answer the question yourself or allow any of these other school board members to answer my simple, basic civics question. Where does this subdivision of the state get its power, in other words, the RSA, to coerce speech of others? Where does this school board get the power to lie by omission or commission to parents if they ask, "What is the transgender status of my student?" Now, this isn't happening just here in Guilford. This is happening countrywide. I am now fully invested. My grandson, who we adopted because of the opioid epidemic, is now in kindergarten. You made it personal. This is going to be your legacy, Gretchen, that you forced this lawsuit unnecessarily. The docket number I don't have with me, but it has been filed, and it is a nine-count indictment of the school board. And trust me, I've had a couple people look at it, you're going to lose. And all because you refused to answer a question. That's sad, it's pitiful, and it's rather insulting that you can't find it to tell your constituents answers to questions. So have fun with this, and I look forward to finally getting you up on the stand to ask the question, and when it doesn't come forward, to be able to ask the judge, the witness is not answering the question, please have her answer the question. If there is an RSA, I'll finally know, and I'll say, "Good, we finally know the answer." But if there is no RSA in this Dillon's Rule state that has the philosophy that subdivisions of the state must have authorizing or enabling legislation behind what they do, as opposed to a whole rule state which says a subdivision can do whatever they want as long as they don't break federal or state laws, but here, you have to show that the legislature has given you that power, which you have refused to do. Now I'll find out. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Doug Lambert, Farmer Drive. I just want to get back to the mask issue. So first of all, I want to thank the board last year. I think you led the way in keeping the schools open pretty much for the entire school year. Many other districts went to the remote learning, and I was quite pleased and proud to be from this town and to be able to say that our town kept the students in school with a warm. Furthermore, I would like to thank you for leading the way after the last meeting, which I watched on YouTube, or wherever it was. I was expecting that we were going to go to mandatory masks, and you didn't, and I appreciate that. And honestly, I thought I was going to come in here tonight and see the Kabuki Theater and find all you people wearing masks, and you're not. So I applaud you for that as well, because I think a lot of this is a charade. I appreciate the doctor's concern. I think like most doctors, if you ask your doctor, "Should I go out in the world, or should I stay home and be safe?", he would advise me to stay home where it's safe. You're better off that way, you won't get hurt. But that's not the world that we live in, and that's not humanity. I'm extremely concerned about the world that our children are living in. I've been reflecting on 20 years of 9/11, and I've seen people state correctly that the world changed forever after that date, and that our children will never get to live in the world that some of us were able to grow up in. So here we are, fast forward 20 years later, and we have this COVID thing. And yes, it's very serious, and yes, people have died. But also, I think our children and grandchildren, in my case, deserve to live in a world where there's as much normal as we can possibly give them. And, you know, I'm not going to, I have the statistics, but Dr. Strang and several others presented them very well about the impact and the statistics and the lack of, like, high numbers when it comes to children. And I happen to think that a child getting to live and to grow and to learn with as much normalcy as possible is every bit, if not more important in the big picture. We need to give these children a future. Now, I am going to quote Dr. Strang, or somebody mentioned Dr. Blaylock, and this really struck me. Concerns are being raised regarding psychological damage and why a mask is not just a mask. There is tremendous psychological damage to infants and children with potential catastrophic impacts on the cognitive development of children. This is even more critical in relation to children with special needs or those within the autism spectrum who need to be able to recognize facial expressions as part of their ongoing development. The accumulating evidence also suggests that prolonged mask use in children or adults can cause harms, so much so that Dr. Blaylock states, quote, "The bottom line is that if you are not sick, you should not wear a mask." So I'm asking the board to continue leading the way in the Lakes region. I have a grandchild that's in another area district, and I happen to believe that there are a lot of people in this area that look to this town to be a leader. And what we do here can set the stage for what happens in some of the other towns. So it's the children here, but it's also the children beyond. And I have one last statement to make. I heard it said on the first speaker that the science is settled. That is insulting. The science has never settled. It's never settled. We continue with discovery. There are things that people believe to be true. I mean, people used to think the world was flat, right? We all know that, we laugh about it, but at the time, it was very serious. I have in my hand a picture, okay? What it is, is there are people being loaded onto boxcars in Germany in the 40s, and the experts said the science was settled, that they were inferior people, and in order to protect the safety of everybody around, they had to be taken care of, for everyone's good, for their safety. I have another picture of people that live in the Islamic world. These are women wearing masks. Why? Because the experts, the scientists, and the leaders say that these women have to wear masks for the safety of society, to keep people from becoming too promiscuous. This was accepted as settled science, and it just rattles me to the core to hear that. So I apologize for being so blunt with that, but it's just, I believe this firmly. It's for our children, we need to let them live a normal life. And for the lady that said someone showed up sick, that's on her, that's not on the school board. I employ people. I have people that I work with. They're told every day, "If you're sick, don't come in to work." I mean, that lady, nobody should show up. I would think that that's got to be the way it is here in Guilford. I can't believe that if somebody's sick with COVID symptoms, especially a teacher, and gosh, if a teacher showed up like that in these times, then probably she shouldn't be in the classroom. So...
It was administration.
Somebody, okay? It was a leader or somebody, any adult, any rational thinking adult in today's world should know better, and the same goes for parents. Now, I know there probably could be some parents that would still send their children there, but I'm sure we're reiterating that as much as we can. But again, I thank the board for showing leadership, and I just would hope that you will continue to show the leadership and continue on with the plan that you have rightfully adopted. Thank you.
Looks like we're going to close the first public comment.
Jay Wood, Chesna Drive, New Hampshire. Thank you all. Greetings. This is wonderful to see this kind of commitment from our community, regardless of which side of this issue you stand, or any of these issues, the show of support is tremendous. I'd also like to ask, if anyone feels comfortable, those who are in support of masking children, please stand.
I think that's a...
Stand if you're able.
Well, I think that's a tough thing to just blanket with.
Great, so we have three here. That's wonderful, and I do appreciate your insights. There's a little bit of incongruity here. We see that there is a teacher, a phenomenal teacher, a very courageous teacher, who stood up, and she is wanting better regulation of quarantine, and that's fair. She deserves that for her classroom, and she has gone through all of these whiplash changes in the past year, just as we have, to guide our children and educate them. And I appreciate and applaud her courage for standing up and advocating. Conversely, we have a doctor talking before you, offering an exposure. He just said last night he was exposed to COVID. He had at least two patients, I think, am I wrong? I thought I heard that. So on that mic, presumably, you have COVID germs, okay? Mask or not, this is an issue of vapors and aerosols? And I'm pretty sure, you know, that good sir just exposed whoever talked on the microphone. I mean, presumably, if we're going by the science that we've been operating off of, it's so fearful for so long. So I'd like to call that attention to these incongruities. I'd also like to ask, if I may, how much time do I have? Because there's been a few run-on speakers here tonight, I just want to, two minutes? Is there a standard?
I'm just trying to be respectful of everyone.
Yes. Sensing that some of you may not be paying attention to anything beyond the lawsuit that was just served to you, I hope that you will at least try to rationally listen to what I'm saying, and you're professionals, so I think you will. The WHO, UNICEF, International Pediatric Association, infection and prevention control, as well as the Guidance Development Group, reviewed available evidence and made recommendations to, quote, "decision-makers and on the use of masks for children in the community," end quote. The formulation of policies by national authorities should be guided by the following overarching public health and social principles. One, do no harm. The best interest, health and well-being of the child should be prioritized. The guidance, two, should not negatively affect the development of learning outcomes. I'd like you to sit with that for a minute. In Section 1 on Advice on the Use of Masks in Children, it clearly states, and I quote, "Based on expert opinion, children aged up to five years should not wear masks for source control. This advice is motivated by do no harm approach and considers childhood development milestones, compliance challenges, and autonomy required to use a mask properly." In addition, this is a little more personal, but much to my disgust, a recommendation that seems obvious and yet is often ignored by feckless, passive medical receptionists state by state, anywhere I go, and unfortunately, this board, who didn't perhaps do their research or didn't know that this guidance was released last year as well. "Children with severe cognitive or respiratory impairments who have difficulties tolerating a mask should, under no circumstances, be required to wear masks." My daughter has severe asthma. She's been hospitalized numerous times, she's been in the ICU, she's only six. I can't, actually, I can tell you, 21 days last year, she had to not go to school or was sent home from school because she could not receive life-saving medical treatment, her nebulizer, just so you know. The child's, in addition, this is directly from the WHO statement, "the child's capacity to comply with appropriate use of masks and potential impact of mask-wearing on learning and psychosocial development." I am almost finished. I will supply a copy of this study to Madam Chair for the board's review. The implication of this, go beyond the elementary school, but the reach, which is actually my primary concern tonight, extends to the village nursery school. Your decisions are consequential. I'm sure you know that, and I'm sure you are proud to take the oath and engage in your position, because you knew that. And your leadership is very important, and I do respect your decision to serve. Be that as it may, that and those decisions that you made have led to the commencement of a homeschool education for my youngest daughter. She was, again, denied life-saving medication at school due to your, probably, presumably defaulting to Dr. Chan's recommendations. Just in conclusion, I fully support you in your courageous battle to dig into research. I think, I love that you think for yourselves, I hope that you do, I hope that you question authority, just as I am raising my daughters to do. Hopefully, it won't come back to bite me. But doing so has made our district the envy of many other parents and students and SAUs throughout the state, and I can confidently say, the country. I know that for sure. So I thank you, and now, as Dr. Laura says, do the right thing, please. Thank you.
Skip, I'm going to limit you to two. We've gone on...
I'll do it in 45 seconds. One important thing I forgot to mention. We're talking about risk, harm, COVID, and I would say bad governance. So I wish to put out the question. The Declaration of Independence was formulated to protect our liberties, not to promote safetyism. So which is... So which is worse as far as harm is concerned? COVID or elected representatives that fail to follow the law? Thank you.
I'm gonna drag this on. Chris McDonald, Oldwood Drive. Six years I sat on that side of the table with you guys. I can't say that I miss it a whole lot. I haven't been suited in a while, so. But thank you for, thank you for what you do. I just, I want to take a minute just to, it's a thankless job. The only time we have this, the meeting in this room is when there's a contentious issue like this and you expect a big crowd to come and put you on the hot seat. But just remember back to a year ago, August, if you would, we sat in this room, we were, you know, COVID was new, we decided what we were gonna do. Everyone was saying, do what everyone else is doing, do the hybrid model. But, you know, I'm really proud of the work that we did as a board. You know, we put the Guilford students and Gilton students first, and we chose to put the kids in school. You know, for goodness sakes, we had someone sitting in that chair over here that told us that we were gonna kill kids if we put them in school. We're gonna kill them. But you know what? We just, we followed common sense, listened to everybody, and made the decision that was best for the students. We did it again last November when there was gonna be a spike. They said it was gonna be a spike, and we had to go to hybrid, had to go to hybrid. But, you know, we had our debate, and we stayed, we stayed the course, and I'm very proud of what we did. And like people have said, that Guilford has been the envy of the Lake region at least, and our students are better for it. So I mean, I read your, the document that you put together. I think it's legitimate. I think it's common sense. You know, obviously, things change, but just follow your heart, listen to what everyone in the room has said, and do what's best for the kids. That's really what you're here for. Change the subject. I heard that later on tonight you were gonna talk about the Meadows Project and moving forward with that, and how you're gonna do that. And there was some discussion about the turf field at the school as an alternative to spending a lot of money at the Meadows. If that's not correct, I apologize, but if it is, I just wanna reiterate my support for that, not just for the athletics programs at Guilford, which are all undefeated right now, by the way. Every one of them, except for.
Cross country's not undefeated.
Sorry. All the field sports teams are undefeated. But anyway, a turf field is a great investment. It's durable, and it serves many purposes for the entire school community and the community in which it sits. Look at Laconia, they had the graduation there, they are from there.
I don't wanna cut you off, Chris, but we're not talking, we're not talking about the turf field.
We're talking about the project though at the Meadows, right? That's gonna be a presentation?
Nope, there's not a presentation. There's just a recommendation from that committee about, they have done an audit of that whole area, and they're breaking that project up into phases, and they're coming forward with a recommendation for us to consider.
I was just told that before, they've invested in the huge locker rooms and everything there, there was, it was talked about, keeping the football field, putting the football field here. But anyway, thank you very much for everything you do.
I'd love to cut the public comment off, but I don't wanna be accused of letting anyone not talk, so we'll let a couple more go, and then we'll go from there.
Stephen Hepburn, Iris Seven, Guilford. And in a similar vein, I understand that the Meadows Committee recommendation today isn't necessarily looking at an option of a turf field, but it is looking at investment into the athletics facilities in the school district as a whole. And the point that I'm looking to make with that is that I went on the tour of the Meadows facility a little while back, first time I was in some of the buildings, and I think I saw, like a lot of people saw, that they are in really bad shape. There's a lot that needs to be done down there. And while I believe we have some costs for some initial phases, we don't have the full costs of what could take to turn that into whatever the division is for, for down at the Meadows. So when it comes to investment in athletic facilities, a couple of years ago, I think for a while, there has been the talk, the potential plan of the turf field up on the high school. And I think it would be prudent for the board to look into that a little bit further, get some fixed costs, potentially on a phased approach, similar to the idea for the Meadows, and get all the information out there to see which option would be best for the taxpayers of Guilford, potentially an unknown amount that has to go into the Meadows facilities to bring them up to standard and to replicate some of the investment that we've already had up in the high school. Or is there an alternative to the initial feasibility study? See what the costs would be for a turf field up at the high school for the option of keeping the Meadows fields as practice fields? And I'm just asking the board to keep an open mind on that, think through that, and if there are alternatives, I think they should all be explored and put on the table. Thank you.
I'd just encourage anyone that has input or commentary regarding that to really get engaged with that Meadows Committee. They need, Karen, who can tell me when the meeting? The second Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, I have the last one.
All right. I am closing that public comment. Next up, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Robert Gudansky. I'm the interim superintendent. The board has my superintendent's report in your pack, and I'd like to highlight a couple of things. But before I do, I'd like to kind of go off script a little bit. I know there are very, two very opposite sides of this debate here tonight, but I wanna commend all of you for showing up and caring about your kids. Ultimately, that's where the difference is. It's not of whether we care about our kids or not, it's a difference of opinion on the mask debate. So thank you very much for caring about your kids. We all care about the kids very much, so thank you for showing up. I'd like to start my superintendent's report out just by saying thanks to all the staff. The staff and the administration had a wonderful opening to school, and also our building maintenance crew, the facilities looked fantastic, the fields looked fantastic, so all of their help along the way certainly is appreciated. We are planning a COVID vaccine flu clinic on October 20th. That's an optional clinic. I'm told that it was run last year as well and was very successful, so that's going to be coming up, and we're pretty excited about that. It is for students and adults in the school district from 12 and older, and for staff, and the students certainly need parental consent to do that. So that's a nice opportunity coming up in the school district.
Can I just interject? I think that it's not run by the Lake Speech and Partnership for Public Health.
Correct. Right, exactly. Transportation, our bus company has been working diligently to make sure that we have adequate transportation. If you've been listening around the state, every district is short of bus drivers. It's a challenge. So a little plug, if you know anybody that would like to be a bus driver, please have them get in touch with me, and we can certainly help them out in training them and making that a career change. And the last thing I have is I had a wonderful meeting with the police chief and some of his staff this afternoon, talking about the memorandum agreement for the resource officer, the collaboration, the communication back and forth between the police department and the school district. So I look forward to working with them and certainly collaborating for the benefit of all of our students. That's all I have for tonight.
Next up on the agenda is discussion of the reopening plan, just a review of that.
Can I start that off? The reopening plan has worked well. I wanna commend everybody for working on that and putting that in place. That was here prior to me coming on board. Obviously, a lot of hard work went into putting that into place. I did meet with the teachers' union, and there were a couple of, some feedback that they wanted me to bring forward in the reopening plan, just to look at the limitations of the current plan in reacting to fluctuations of community spread should that occur, and also some specific indicators that would trigger a planned readjustment if and when that was needed. And the union also talked about staff being notified for positive cases within their classroom. And that brings me to the reopening plan. There are two areas in the reopening plan that we have had quite a bit of discussion in the last, I would say, two to three weeks. The first is masking, targeted masking, universal masking, not masking at all, keeping it optional. All of that certainly is part of the discussion tonight. The other piece is the notification of positive cases. It makes sense to me that if we have a positive case either within a classroom or on an athletic team, that we do a notification of that classroom, that staff, that athletic team, so parents can make an informed decision. So that's on the last part of the reopening plan. That was the suggested language of notifying if there's a positive case. Getting back to the masking, again, there's very strong feelings on both sides of this. And one of the things that I've looked at is how can we prevent spread should there be a student in the classroom that is infected with COVID-19? And sometimes we may not know that if they're asymptomatic. So for discussion tonight, I placed a couple of different trigger points, if you will, for consideration and discussion, and I think the discussion is the healthy part of this. One is that if there are two or more identified cases within a grade level, that grade level would be required to wear a mask for the 10 to 14 days to allow that the COVID positive cases to not spread throughout the class. And then the other is a universal masking of if there are four or more identified cases within a building, that the building would be wearing masks until the 10 to 14 days. Now, you'll see that if you've looked at different school districts throughout the state and perhaps around the country, everybody's all over the place with this. Some have masking, some have optional, some don't have masking at all. Everybody's trying to do the best they can. So I bring those two points in your reopening plan to the board tonight for further discussion, and however you end up, whatever your decision is, I know that our staff and our administration will make every effort to make it work.
So in this plan, it shows targeted masking for K through eight, but there was nothing listed for the high school. Is there any reason behind that?
Yeah, it's really different looking at K eight and looking at high school. In kindergarten through eighth grade, a lot of times you've either got teams or you've got a specific classroom that's isolated. At the high school, targeted masking is gonna be difficult because you may have a freshman with juniors and seniors and throughout the day, and targeted masking would be difficult.
Could we also have the potential maybe targeted towards the building if we have significant cases? Like if we have three cases going on in high school, but we have absolutely nothing going on in the elementary school? I am uncomfortable with requiring those elementary schools to mask if there is not, I don't wanna say inappropriate, but if it's not required, if it's only affecting one that way.
Right. Yeah, I think that that's reasonable. This is not a, this is very difficult to put down, you know, a number per se because the buildings and the community and the students, I mean, everything is so very different. I wish I had a magic wand and I could bring some brilliant, you know, recommendation forward, but this is a very difficult situation. I think you know that by now. This pandemic has challenged us all.
I have a question on the number of days and more. I understand that the K to eight is not within our purview for Gilton, so I'm not going to question that, but on the universal masking, with it involving the high school, there is no end date specified. And so then if I just kind of look back at the K to eight building, it specifies 14 days. Is there a reason why 14 days are selected versus the 10 days of quarantine that someone would have to undergo if exposed, if unvaccinated and exposed to a member of their household?
My understanding is that all of the information I've read and seen is that 10 days is, that takes care of, I believe, like 80% of the people are done in 10 days, and the 14 days takes right through the end of when somebody would be able to spread COVID-19. So some places are doing 10 days, some places are doing 14 days. I think, again, 10 days would be reasonable.
And then, sorry, one more follow-up on the universal masking. Thank you, Nan, for asking about if it could be specified to the building, because I think that is important, especially with the way that we're set up. But the other question I had was how the four was calculated. Is that based upon, I guess, what is it based upon?
Again, that's not an exact science. I looked at other school districts around the state and tried to take a reasonable number on when it got to the point where spread was more likely. So that number certainly could be adjusted one way or another.
I have a question. That 14 days, so what happens if there's an additional case within that 14 days? Would that restart the clock?
I would say yes. It would have to be, if you're going by this, it would have to be 14 days from the last identified case. Because that tells me that it's still within the classroom.
I am comfortable leaving the masking requirements for optional where they are now. I've heard from the parents and the people that have put us in these seats, and I happen to agree. A lot of them brought up a lot of the things that I was going to bring up. I'm not gonna rehash everything. But the science is not settled. We have very limited, I should say, there's actually a lot of information going back when they studied masks versus influenza, and again, it's statistically insignificant. And then you contrast that with these young learners, especially the elementary age, kindergarten first, second, trying to learn to read and facial expressions and reading lips. I just think it does more harm than good. I do, though, on the back page, have a positive communication. I would be comfortable, though, you know, targeting the notification, and if there was a case in the class, that we would, you know, notify those parents. And as I have read through the Department of Health and Human Services Toolkit for the 2021, 2022 school year, then that would, again, it would leave it up to the parents whether or not they wanted to hold their child out, because unless there's a household close contact, there is no quarantine requirement that I have seen in here. So I would be okay with the, you know, the targeted notification. I do not believe we should be sending out a notification to the entire district if there's, you know, a case in a particular class, but I would be on board with that. But as far as the masking, I am just not convinced that masks are going to make any appreciable difference in the mitigating of the spread of the SARS-CoV-19. And again, when we look at the data, again, a lot of these people brought it up, but, you know, state of New Hampshire, 20 years old and younger, zero deaths. You know, my question is to some of these doctors is, where were you a couple of years ago when kids were dying from the flu? Why weren't they showing up saying, hey, let's mask our kids, we're having a flu outbreak? I mean, so to me, there's a lot of other motives going on. We're getting a lot of, you know, just conflicting information from our, you know, our governments, our, you know, you listened to President Biden's speech the other night, and again, I'm still trying to round my head around this. I'm still trying to round my head around this. We need to vaccinate the unvaccinated to protect the vaccinated. It just doesn't even make any sense to me. So again, and Gretchen, I know I shared with you some links to some stuff. I mean, right, the UK is not requiring masks. The European CDC is not requiring masks for children under 13. There was a study that the CDC actually did, and if you read the headline, you'd probably say, oh, wow, we should mask up, because the headline says, "Mask Use and Ventilation Improvements to Reduce COVID-19 Incidents in Elementary Schools, Georgia." And it says, I have to, I printed out the full version. The headline said that if you mask and improve ventilation, you'll reduce cases by 37%. Wow, that's awesome. Then you read the first sentence, and it says, "When teachers and staff were masked," now keep in mind, this was pre-vaccination, this was last November and December, when, again, cases were spiking, "and ventilation improvements." You read halfway down into this study here, and it says, and I will quote, "The 21% lower incidence in schools that required mask use among students was not statistically significant when compared with schools where mask use was optional." Now, the 21% number might seem high, but when you look at the raw data, this study down in Georgia analyzed 90,000 students. 49,132 students were in schools that masks were required. 42,761 students were in schools where masks were optional. In the schools where masks were required, you had 240 cases. In the masks where they were optional, 326 cases. So 86 cases, not deaths, not hospitalizations, 86 cases out of 90,000 students where masks were either optional or not required. So to me, the data doesn't drive it. There is no settled science. Masks have never been worn to prevent airborne respiratory illnesses, ever. We don't mask healthy people, especially children, when they're psychologically developing their skills to learn how to read, to read facial expressions, to be able to interact with one another. We're humans. We need to see each other's faces, and it's dehumanizing to put masks on children. So again, I will definitely support the targeting of the notification when there's a case in the class, but I will certainly not support masking of any students. Thank you.
I agree with everything the trial just stated.
Gretchen? I do support the positive, the communication, targeted communication. I would just suggest that the parents, the community be notified in an email, because when we first did the reopening plan, it said we weren't, the school wasn't going to do notifications. But then some parents received a very generic notification, and it wasn't, I received it, I just assumed everybody got it. And when I found out that not everybody got it, it was definitely targeted. So I think if we're going to do this to just let everybody know that is what we're doing, so that maybe if and when they get an email like this, that it is targeted. That's all. And I just, I'm playing devil's advocate. So if we get to a point where we have lots of kids getting sick, what is the alternative if we're not willing to support masks? I guess that's the question. If we have a lot of kids, then what do we do?
I think that's something I've been thinking of too, is I feel like, sort of to echo what Kristin talked about, I feel like we're very much at a situation like we were in the last November, where it felt like the sky was going to be falling, and I, truth be told, really pumped, okay, we need to pivot to remote at that point. And I did not get my way, and I was wrong. And I remember going to that next meeting that next month and saying, I'm glad I was wrong, and you guys got your way. And I think, but likewise, what's holding me up is, not that I want to institute mandatory masks, but what is our trigger point that we sort of say, okay, we've got X number of cases in the school right now? What do we do in that situation if we're not willing to potentially pivot to a targeted masking for a certain amount of time? Do we then just keep the schools open with those large number of cases out of school? Or do we consider some sort of targeted masking at that moment so that we can potentially get beyond that spike? That's the question I'm putting out to all of you, because I don't know the answer.
Jen, you have a thought on that? Can you put your?
I mean, I'm just making a suggestion of just rolling with it, I guess you could say, sticking with our plan, other than adding that we're going to target notification, notify the classrooms. But, I mean, if we need to have an emergency meeting, then we have one, and we can make a change if necessary. But now, I think we just stick with what we originally said. And, yeah, I don't think we need to have a turning point at this point.
The other thing that got talked about a bit was the contact tracing. The question I have is, I know last year, principals and superintendent were pretty much contact tracing 24 hours a day, it seemed like seven days a week, and that's certainly not sustainable. Is there any, when we do have a positive case, what are we bound to do? We report it to the Department of Health and Human Services, and then do they offer any support with contact tracing to local districts? Or?
When we were in this, in this last year, the contact tracing went to the Department of Health and Human Services, and they were responsible initially for contact tracing. And then soon thereafter, they got overwhelmed, and the contact tracing came back to the responsibility of the local school district. So it was very cumbersome at that point. So we continue to, if we have positive cases, notify Department of Health and Human Services. But the reality is that I don't believe they're contact tracing right now.
Gretchen, so in the toolkit here of the NHD HHS, there's a saving here. In the event of a cluster or an outbreak, identify close contacts, NHD HHS may recommend quarantining close contacts in an outbreak situation. So it does sound like something that they would be implementing if we're reporting to them a cluster or an outbreak, I guess it's an outbreak. So then they would be the ones, according to this document here, advising us if we should be quarantining students. But it really does talk about only household contacts in the majority of cases. So it was a little, again, it's guidance, they did that, they definitely didn't mandate anything in here. But from what I can see, unless there's an outbreak, there wouldn't be any quarantining of close contacts. So it does sound like the DHHS would be the ones to do that. That's on page 14 of that toolkit. One last quick thing, too, just to kind of reiterate, you know, as far as masks, you know, do they work, don't they work? And again, I'm skeptical. But there was also, I just read an article, Cornell University, so their goal, when they were going back to school, so just reading this article right here, it was just sent to me the other day. And so they've aggressively pushed students to get vaccinated, announcing a mandate for the 2021, 2022 school year. As a result, 95% of campus population, both students and faculty, is vaccinated. Despite this, Cornell University has more than five times the amount of confirmed positive cases during its first week of this academic year than it did during the first week of 2021 of 2021. By the numbers, during the first week of the school, from August 27th to September 2nd of this year, Cornell University has reported 322 positive cases. Comparison, during the first week of last year, which ran September 3rd through September 9th, Cornell reported 59 cases. So that's 263 more cases, or five times the amount comparing to last year. And then it goes in a little further, too, because it's showing there were just as many kids tested, actually, there's been more kids tested, there were more kids tested last year than this year. So this year, there's been less kids tested and more confirmed cases with 95% vaccination and a mandatory mask requirement. So again, I'm not convinced by the data. And again, I know that's anecdotal, but there isn't anything established science out there that says masking is going to, and again, if you read the European CDC, the World Health Organization, you know, they do talk about that especially children that can't properly wear these masks, it's actually, it can be harmful, and it's a false sense of security. And again, with all the psychological, you know, developing their cognitive skills to be able to read and to write, again, I'm just, I'm not on board with it. And until I'm presented with data that, you know, shows me to the contrary, again, I'm not on board with masks, especially the youngest kids. And I know, you know, that's the biggest contention, is, oh, well, they're the ones that are eligible for the vaccine. It's like, well, they're the least at risk, no deaths. So again, that's just where I'm at. And again, I can, I've got a whole bunch of papers up here, I've highlighted a bunch of stuff, Gretchen, I know I sent you some stuff. Again, I haven't, I can't say this is all peer-reviewed stuff either. I'm not saying this is like settled science either. I'm just saying it makes me question whether or not the experts at the CDC are being forthright and honest with us.
I appreciate some of the research that was done, but looking at the study, you have, Kyle, there's 1,461 schools reported in Georgia. Only 169 of them participated in that study. So I think that the numbers are a little bit low in that study. But obviously, I need to do more research, and that's the person hearing that one.
Agreed. It's one study, right? It's not, it's not even peer-reviewed, it's just data, raw data. 90,000 students, that's a decent sample size. So, but again, when we look at other studies, there was a Danish study that followed 6,000 people last year, and it showed, it was a 0.3% difference masked versus unmasked. So again, there's just, to me, I don't see science in masking kids. I don't think that that is the way out, honestly. These kids, thank God, are largely unaffected by this thing. I just don't see it as something that we need to force upon them, and the parents can make that choice for their own child.
But I would also like to remind our teachers and our faculty with what the options are without having to hold an emergency meeting if we can, some plan going forward. And we're looking at, we either talking about wearing masks for 14 days. I mean, we could do 10 school days, and that would constitute the 14 days, just to stop the potential spread going forward. I mean, that's kind of how I'm looking at that. Not saying that I'm right or anything, because I've got other plans from other school districts that I've put down here. And obviously, I want some more information on targeting buildings and how that's affected. Yes, we have siblings in the school, but, I mean, obviously, I don't want the elementary school affected if it's only happening in the high school. I don't think that that's appropriate for all the students. Kind of going back and forth on that.
So I guess my feelings are, is the school board should always have the option to say, this is it, we've got your, it doesn't work. By the time we have a child who tests positive in the school, this is, I want to leave it that it is, it's not, it's optional. It's up to the parents whether or not they want their child to do it. But by the time you have a phone call saying, your daughter is positive, she's already been positive, she's already contracted it for seven days. In that seven days, she could infect a whole class. So being able to stop it short and say, okay, we're having a problem here. We've got, in the elementary school, we know wasn't our big issue last year. I mean, at one point, we had 73 kids out of the high school. Right. And how many of them really tested? You know, 150 kids, they don't come down with COVID. So I don't want to get back to that point where we're yanking them in and throwing them out, yanking them in. That's even more detrimental to especially kids who are already anxious about this. But I do think, safety-wise, you do have to be able to say, you know what, we've got this little pocket, we all know Zomlat County is the highest rate right now of active COVID cases in the state. Something to be really proud of. But I want to make sure that if a population, if a pop-up should happen, just like when we get the flu, you know, I remember times when you guys were in school, that we had a lot of kids up for the flu, that the board at that time considered even maybe shutting the school down for a week to give it a break, scrub through all of them, which we unfortunately didn't see last year. I'm hoping with proper hygiene, the hand washing, the sanitizer we're doing, we won't have to do that. But I want some backup so that if we have a pop-up, that we can say, okay, anybody can wear the mask for 10 days, just to give that class a break. I have kids that were affected last year, and between the two of them and two different grades being affected, they lost four weeks of school, and they had just come back into school. They managed to make it the last couple of weeks. That was really hard for them. And that was, you know, so I don't want to see anybody, and then of course, I have to beg to get their parents to let them come back to school. It's safe, it's going to be fine, wouldn't you know, you could buy a Powerball ticket. But they did come back, and they did have a positive experience, and they're so excited to be back this year. That's what I want to continue. But I think we do have to have that safety net and the ability to say, you know what, this is what we have to do. I'll even be willing to drop it back to 10 days to give that classroom and those teachers, we only have so many teachers. We start having teachers getting sick, we're going to make that all go in and teach? So this is what we have to be able to keep them safe, not for forever. And again, it's optional. If you say, I don't care if that classroom, you want to stay with the optional, we're going to say, okay, we'd like everyone to wear a mask for 10 days. If Kyle says, I don't want my kid to wear a mask in that class, that's your choice. But I think we have to be able to have a backup plan to cut it off, to give it, to stop the spread of it before we end up having to say, you know what, we've got 30 kids affected. I'm willing to still bet it's not going to be our elementary school that's going to be the problem. It's just the nature of the beast. The high school, the kids are constantly flowing amongst each other with the way the classes are. So I think we're still going to see it's going to be the older kids. But those young kids that have older siblings, and I would like to say that everybody is going to still stay on board and watch their kid if they're sick, or say, gee, I got that important meeting this month, today, I can't stay home, I've got it up. And they go, well, maybe it's just a cold. And that's where our downfall is going to be. So leave it optional, but don't take away our power to be able to say, you know what, we're seeing, we're seeing a number, we're seeing four or five kids in a school before this gets out of control, let's see if we can nip it in the bud, and bring it under control, and then go back to our optional. But leave it up to the parents, if that's, but I'm not going to tell my teachers, you're not going to wear a mask, or you've got to wear a mask, or if they want to wear a mask, I'm not going to tell them that you can't. This is, that's crazy. That's what, you know, so that's all I'm saying, is don't take away our power to change. The school board should always have the option to enact.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not asking to take away our power to change, but I just want to stick to our original plan, except for adding targeted notifications for positive cases. For example, if the first grade class gets positive cases, we notify that first grade class. Otherwise, I'd like to keep everything optional and operate as if it, we would just with regular school and make masks optional. And if there is an abnormal spike, then we meet again and regroup. Because what you're saying is, if there's two more cases in the first grade, now we're going to make everybody wear a mask, it kind of contradicts what we're saying, we don't think they work.
Well, we can even raise that number. I think two is a low number, but we can raise that. I'm just saying that I think it's only for 10 days in that particular classroom.
But if that class is notified, parents have the option to tell their kids, you know what, there's a couple of kids in your class, they're not in there for their quarantine, and they'll come back, what they better, I'd like you to wear the mask.
Absolutely.
And like you said, so again, it's optional.
Right. But we can strongly recommend.
Well, absolutely. I think you can strongly recommend, but I think it needs to remain optional. I think what is... I think what is different this year than last year, right? We have this vaccine, right? All the teachers that have wanted it have had it, anybody in the public. I mean, it's been available since January. So I mean, there's been ample time for anybody who's at risk. So this whole notion of a child's going to get it, bring it home to somebody who's vulnerable, well, that person has had a choice for the last nine months to choose to get a vaccination. To me, it's about choice. It's parental choice, it's how to raise your child, how you see fit. I don't want to set any mandates in place regarding masks. And so I'm just, I'm not going to support any type of a mask requirement. But again, I'm one person, so.
We'll vote for you again.
When these conversations over this, the targeted measuring, was that discussion with the union?
That's Bob. Bob just put those there as a, just to start a conversation, I believe.
Well, how did the union feel, the teachers?
Yeah, I think that the, the, the three things that I had mentioned were the points that they really brought up with the union. And that was the current plan to react to fluctuations in community spread, the indicators that would trigger a readjustment, and that language about notification. Those were really the three hot topics, points that were brought up.
Does anyone have any more? Though, the one thing I keep hanging on is, I know how difficult it is for all of us to get together for one meeting. So I don't want to not have some sort of triggering moment to give administration some sort of leeway to pivot, to revoke for 24 hours, to figure something out, or whatever that might be. Because to get the five of us in a room together is sometimes impossible, as we noticed this last month. So I'm not comfortable not having some sort of triggering point in this to prepare for that uncertainty. Or somehow having a clause that allows for administrators to make that decision on the spot until that meeting can happen. So I just put that out there to all of you as well. Does anyone have any suggestion?
I think, so as far as the last part, the clause about administration, in Gilmoreton, we did add that clause. However, I know that you all have the policy in place as well. There, and I can't remember the name of the policy right now, so don't hold me to it. But there is the policy that we've set. It was set, I think, last year, maybe the year before. Time starts to get blurry after sitting here at the table a little bit too long. But there is a policy in place so that if there is an emergency, that the superintendent does have the authority to, to make the call. And then we put, I believe it was within 48 hours or whatever time is reasonable to meet. Obviously, if there was some major natural disaster or something like that where we couldn't physically meet, there is that policy already in place to address issues such as I think this would be. But I do come back to last year and I was, I was on the same side as Gretchen. I was nervous about the spike and I was wrong, and I was glad to be wrong. And, and trying to, I, it's near impossible to define a triggering event and come up with what the magic number is. I think for some people, it does create, just, just the knowledge of knowing what that parachute plan is. Because I know that, I think everybody in this room would agree that the parachute to go to remote is like the worst option around. Everybody wants to be in school. So, so coming up with what, what is that next thing that we'll do? Is it putting masks on? Is, what, what is it? Is it going to six feet? What, what is it that we are going to try and do to mitigate that risk of having to go remote? That, that's what I keep coming to and I don't have the right, that magic number or that magic solution. But I think that that would, I think on either side, whether you're for masks or not for masks, that you would want to know that your child is going to be in school. And that there's something else that we can try and do before we get to that point.
Leavy, I'm just throwing this out here as a compromise, listening to the input. I hear lots about the targeted notification. And I also hear a lot about, about keeping masks optional. Could we ramp up that targeted notification to include? Masks are highly suggested given the climate, but if, could that be our triggering sort of circumstances? That we, we do a better job of targeted notification, but then we also, in that communication, encourage? Because I'm assuming if there's, we're in that situation as well. DHHS is going to, as Kyle just mentioned, get involved and will likely make recommendations. So that targeted notification would then include the recommendation of, of the DHHS, but it wouldn't require a mask, but it may well highly encourage that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I, I guess. I think as long as, and I'm all for, you know, if we want to highly suggest, if we want to highly recommend, but ultimately it has to be left up to a parent. So yeah, I would, I would support that.
How does that sound to you, Bob, from an administrative standpoint?
I guess I'm unclear as to what you're suggesting. So if, are you saying that if we hit one of these triggering points, that part of the notification is that we highly recommend to parents that masks can be done?
No, I, because I'm not hearing that anyone wants that.
Or highly recommend.
Yeah. I, I'm hearing that people want to, want targeted notification. I'd like to even see it within the school. I know some people don't want to get those emails all the time, but I think I want to have the, as a parent, I wouldn't mind knowing, within the high school, we have four positive cases right now, or whatever that would be. Because I think without that, we get into different things too. Where we're going to get into championship, like Chris was just talking about, our championship teams. Well, my son has the state championship for cross country in two weeks. And there's 10 cases in a school. I want to know about that, even if he hasn't been in that class, because he may well want to wear a mask to try and make sure that he doesn't get a breakthrough case of COVID before. But right now, he goes to school without a mask. And I think there are those situations where parents may well want to make that call. And likewise, there are a lot of parents where some feel very comfortable with their kid being unvaccinated in the elementary school without a mask, others aren't and are sending their kids to school in masks. And I think we need to also appreciate that even if the case wasn't in their kid's classroom, they may well want to know if there are many cases within the elementary school. And as a parent, I think we, I think we could do well by, by ramping up that notification. So it's not just if Johnny's in the second grade, I get a notification, but we have a positive case in the elementary school.
I, I agree with that, I could get behind that. Yeah.
So you're saying if there's a case in the first grade, we would let all three school districts know?
No, we let everyone in the elementary school know, not just the first grade class.
Right, okay, but I was saying, I thought you were saying, like, you let everybody, they go to the elementary, middle, and high school?
That wasn't what I.
So you're, Gretchen, what you're saying is targeting it for the school. So for the elementary, or the middle school, or the high school?
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah. Yeah. I would agree.
And then everybody can make their choice on the normal board.
Does that mean I'm going to get a phone call on my cell phone and email and phone call up my work line? Because frankly, by the third one, I was going, yes. Can we figure out how that's going to happen?
Just to throw, throw something out there, could we have kind of both? Where the first grade class is, and I know I'm not on it for the first grade class, but where the, the targeted group is notified, so the cross country team is notified. But then perhaps in the, because we receive weekly notifications from the principal already, could there just be some piece of information in that weekly notification to say, to date, we have had X number of cases? Or at the end of the week, this is, this is where we stand in our building? So that targeted group that may have been in contact has been notified. And then we have kind of the soft, but, so that you're not receiving the phone call, the text, the email and whatever to have. This is where we stand overall. And then at the school board meeting, maybe in the superintendent's report, we just have the, this month, we had this many cases. Just so we can see if there's any kind of trend that is happening. I don't know how much longer, I hope not much longer, I'm tired of this conversation. But how many more months we have to discuss this, this COVID-19? And what it's doing to our school? So that we can actually have some hard data to, to kind of look at, to see where we're, where we are trending. And you can change the frequency if you don't like the weekly or the monthly or whatever, but maybe that, that becomes the notification and then we have some data and parents can make an informed decision on their own.
That's what I, I agree with that, I was going to say, same thing, the targeted, the school gets it. And then the normal notification we get, yeah, I agree. And hopefully that's not too much of a burden, because they're already doing that periodic notification anyways.
I think you have to look at what's useful information and what's not useful information. Because one of the things that we talked about with targeted notification was that if it's a student in the second grade and we notify everybody in the second grade, then parents know that their, their child, if they're in second grade, they may have come in contact or possibly come in contact where a kindergarten student, they don't have to worry about. So, you know, if we, if we just notify as a, a school level, we're not really, I mean, I question whether that's useful information or not. We certainly could target, I think pretty effectively, at K through eight, telling grade levels or a, a, a second grade classroom. But we'd have to have those discussions as administration. Whereas at the high school, it might make a little bit more sense to say, we have two cases at the high school, because of the nature of students circulating around all over the place. So, you know, I think it's a little easier at the elementary school. It gets a little bit more cumbersome at the middle school, but, but I think we can do it grade level wise. And then at the high school, it makes to me a little bit more sense to do kind of a global notification just because of the way the students move around the building. So if the board feels comfortable with that, I certainly can work with our building administrators kind of knowing what we're, what we're shooting for here. And we can do the, the targeted notifications as best we can. And at the same time, I think it's a good idea coming and letting you know, you know, we've had X number in the building. We certainly could do updates like that.
I think at some point, we might have had a dashboard of some sort that we updated on the website that sort of had, had its numbers available.
Yeah, the state dashboard last year, for a while, everybody was inputting numbers. And then again, it got overloaded and the state was, was really backlogged with that. So I question how accurate it was. But we certainly could, I certainly could come to you and let you know, you know, a snapshot in time where we're at each month for the board meeting.
Anthony?
I don't know if it's my place to provide feedback or more questions, and I don't want to get too in the weeds. But before you make this decision, I'd like for you to have all the mere facts. So at the high school, we currently have three active cases. We were just notified, I was just notified of one before we entered this. So I will have to do some work on that. However, one of these cases was before, that student never has stepped foot onto this campus. So we set the number of four. However, that going in the weeds, but is our four a threshold? What does that involve? If we were to get a fourth case tomorrow, do we defer until the next day to mask up? So just, those are some of the questions that enter my mind, where we're nearing that, that threshold right now. The proposed threshold of four.
Just a suggestion, we're talking about two different things here right now. So would it be reasonable to finish off the targeted notification discussion? And then revisit the mask and what we're going to finalize on that?
Agreed.
And we will get one piece out of the way.
And it sounds to me like what Bob just described, the targeted K3 notification. And then high school would just be a global notification for the, for the school. Is that what we're agreeing on?
No, I just, well, if, no, I'm just thinking out loud, if, if possible, like if you're a member of the, the cross country team, could you be notified that, okay, you might, you might be in a little bit of a different risk group? I know, I understand that in a classroom, that's near impossible. But if, if there are situations where, and I think we had some last year, where we had some cases like the, with performing arts. I know that there are a lot of families that were getting calls from performing arts. If there's any way to just know, so that you kind of know which child, if you have multiple children, I'm speaking as a parent of two in the school, high school right now, which one I need to focus on a little more, that might be at risk a little more? That might be helpful information. I don't want to create more work if that's too much work. I'm completely fine with the global notification too.
Yeah, we've just got to make sure that we're not identifying specific children.
Correct. But in practice, isn't that sort of what we're doing anyways? We had a case on a sports team, didn't we?
That was a little bit different because it happened before school opened. So in that case, yes, we did exactly what you're talking about. But that was prior to school being open, so that student or students were never within the building.
Then you want to bring this home?
I, I'm fine with the K3 targeted and the nine through 12 global. And then the, the updates from the Indo-Joel principles about how many active cases we have going on so that way people are aware.
Let's have someone make a motion too.
Me first?
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion that we change the reopening plan to include targeted communication for K through eight and global communication for nine through 12.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Close. All right. Next step is getting back to that front, front page regarding any sort of triggering point for targeted masking.
So as I'm listening to all the parents and the concerns and everything, I honestly want to see where the next 30 days go. Before we start, we start putting numbers in there and actually saying, yeah, we want you to wear a mask, this kind of thing. I, I think one, four days in school, sorry, five days, I forget what day it is, it's not enough time.
Could we hold on to this piece until our next board meeting?
So it looks like we're just, we just won't, we won't make any action on that part?
No.
But I would like to see it on the agenda.
On the agenda. Because this is putting us right back where we were last year, when, you know, we were trying to decide. And we decided to hold off and wait, we found that we didn't end up with any.
And, and then again, we have, if there's an emergency, we give body.
We give the authority.
The authority. And likewise, just in practice, I think there can be some, okay, the golf team had a positive case, let's decide. That's just sort of practical reaction to this, right? Okay. Is that clear enough or are you moving forward or?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll go by the reopening plan, we'll make that adjustment for notifications. And we'll keep an eye on it until. And we'll keep an eye on it until the next meeting. Appreciate all the discussion.
Principals report. In the interest of time, Danielle.
I'd just like to spin it as.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Danielle? All right, moving on to Peter. Anything else to add?
Go ahead.
No? All right. Anyone have any questions? All right, moving right along.
Sorry, I snuck up on you.
Nothing to add, but I just want to make sure that that paragraph regarding finding staffing for our needs for our local facilities. What I would like to propose is if we aren't able to find anybody to fill that void for five months, that we do a journal entry from the COVID money that we've been put into the budget already for supplies to help cover this need. We'll do our best to find something within a temp agency. But we do have the backup going with the contracted service provider. I just feel that it's important to keep the schools clean and maintained. We're already kind of running on no subs really, other than one potential site. And so I'd bring that forward in October.
With the S R funds, do we have the potential of contracting?
The time that it would take to get that approved is my only concern. So we did put $20,000 in each of the schools.
Every time I have an idea, I mean.
I know. And then looking for an action on the letter from the high school regarding student activity accounts and closures of the zero balance accounts.
Does anyone want to make a motion on that?
I'll motion to approve the closing of the list of accounts as presented and the opening of the class of 2025 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. I also included a copy of the town budget committee schedule. S R two, S R three, my memo regarding that. This is more that it just, it really needs to be publicized as far as being put into a public forum and being part of our minutes and part of our agenda. But I do need approval to move forward with the proposed activity with Sue Penny Bergman. And then knowing that in October, we'll bring forward more information on S R three.
So I'll make a motion to move forward with having Sue Penny Bergman come in for the professional development.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I know her and she'll do some wonderful things with wellness, some of the concerns I've had for our staff and administrators this year. She will be very helpful. Hopefully know me that process.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One opposed? Any extension? Two extensions? All right, passes.
And then last but not least, our meadow committee update. We had that August 2nd tour of the property. We held a meeting with the meadows committee and kind of discussed, you know, what was the basic outcome of that walkthrough? And as you heard tonight, the majority of the building is kind of rough. In following our process as far as trying to move phases forward to try to be thoughtful of taxpayer investment, we came to the conclusion that the storage piece was the most important and most valuable to the building. We worked in communication with our, in hand-in-hand with our community partnerships with the sports teams. And just feel like that back storage area that we've always talked about would be kind of the most purposeful thing to move forward with. So in talking about that, the total phase of 65,000 for, I believe it's phase three, is what we would like to see put into the budget for '22, '23. In your documentation, it's 61,000. We're thinking with the cost of inflation and COVID costs of materials, 65 is probably more reasonable. But this would put in the garage doors and allow for some secure storage for the teams. And then should we decide to do anything with that better garage area where the golf cart is parked now? At least we'd have a safe place to put all of that equipment somewhere else should we decide to do something more with that area. So it kind of makes sense to move in that direction. And the classroom, so not to leave that undiscussed. The classroom renovations, obviously, we know that there's a problem with ventilation and air circulation and the windows don't open. And the ADA door only opens from the inside out. Structural study shows that the flooring is, the flooring support is bad. The roof inside, the structural piece that actually holds the shingles on is really no better than a pole barn. Literally, there's bark on the branches up there. And it's 24 on center at best. So it's not recommended as a safety issue to have kids in that class. Last year, we held the alternative classroom here at the high school. While it wasn't extremely what people wanted, it did work and we do have the space. But the committee would like to see it stay that way until we make a decision on what we're gonna do with repairs to that classroom.
And I think our concerns were the cost involved. Some of the building is really punky. So we could say, "Oh, we looked at..." Well, we could replace the windows. But if we rip out the window and then we find the ceiling is rotten, then you go down into the wall and before you know it, we've got to strip it. And to remove the cost of rebuilding it is just, didn't seem to make a lot of sense. And it's not, it would not be ready this year anyhow. And with COVID, we cannot put kids back in that classroom. Just for the sheer fact we don't have the circulation for the fresh air.
So I guess the action item would be support to put that into the budget building process, which I'll be starting this month to bring forward to the superintendent at the end of September. And if it survives budget, that's great. If it doesn't, it will go through the process.
Do you need a specific vote on that? Or do we just need to give you guidance that it's okay to do that? Or does anyone have thoughts on that?
I'm still not in favor of putting any money in down there. Gretchen, you and I talked a couple of weeks ago and I had mentioned I was gonna reach out to Rick and I haven't done so yet. Just kind of just speaking out loud, I really envision just for, I think, what's gonna benefit everybody and be the most cost-effective. I can see bringing the football field to the school like the original plan. However, not with a turf field. I think that would be the most cost-effective way to get back, you know. And the other piece of that too is right, we have this other locker room project that we've got to do at the school here, which we know is gonna be north of $1 million. So I'm just really hesitant to want to put any money into the meadows. I know we probably have to make a decision fast because the building is continuing to deteriorate. I just don't want to throw any good money after bad. So again, I think that would be something that I'm putting on my agenda to reach out to Rick. And maybe I can show up at the next meadows meeting. I really want to be involved. I think I need more information still. But if the original plan was to have the field down here, I can get behind that. Obviously, I don't, wouldn't support a turf field. And I actually have some documents that I'd like to share with Rick and the rest of the board as well that, getting some feedback here. But the, just not to digress too much, but the notion that these turf fields are actually more cost-effective than grass long-term is, I don't know if the data backs that up. I found a pretty good article from Safe, SafeHealthyFields.com. And when you actually analyze all the cost, the turf field isn't cheaper. They only last for eight to 10 years and then they have to be replaced entirely. There's maintenance costs. And then the injuries, I'll just finish with this. The NFL Players Association did a survey last year. 90% of NFL players prefer playing on grass. And when they, they asked more questions in the survey, they said, "What type of field do you believe would shorten your career early?" And again, 90% of them said the turf fields. So I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I think we all need to do our due diligence to make, you know, to drop, drill down and look at the facts. But the NFL's Players Association is, they're actually lobbying to have every single NFL field, which is 15 of them that are turf, turned back to grass. So again, I've got more information that I need to, you know, find and research. I'm not saying I have all the answers now by any means. But I think, I just envision the scenario. We bring the football field back down to here, grass field, throw the goalposts up, throw some bleachers up. You've got your locker rooms, you've got your bathrooms. Maybe we build a little concession stand at some point. We could probably even put lights up, which I've been told we can't put lights down at the meadows field. Yeah, but portable ones. But I think because of the airport, there was an issue.
There is. And I think before we move forward with anything, because it can't be just a board decision. So the committee needs the board's guidance on, okay, what do we look at? But before I think we get into any decisions, it's gotta be a community forum where we're gonna have to have, to even bring the football field back, I want to know what do the people in the village think? What, you know, is the football team sustainable? How many people are gonna play on this field? What are we gonna do?
See, and I agree with all that, Karen, I do.
Great, all these restrictions. So, you know, the one thing that the meadows is pretty much only use is storage. Because the school district does use it for spare tables, desks, equipment. So it's safe for that. It's just, we looked at it and they said, "Well, if we're looking at a million-plus whole locker rooms here, I won't want to burden the town with another big locker room project down there." Put in a couple of bathrooms because it is a field that gets used for practice? But I don't want to, it didn't make sense to duplicate everything.
And I agree, but I believe maybe right when we looked at doing just a couple bathrooms, I mean, we were north of $1 million on that.
But they had added bathrooms.
Okay, so maybe we need to see a cost analysis of.
Concession stand. It had, they had, we weren't even looking at here. We were looking there. There, we really should have at least two bathrooms.
Can Bob jump in for a second?
I just want to clarify, you've got a meadows committee and it's a very kind of inclusive discussion as you're hearing bits and pieces of it tonight. I think what the decision needs to happen tonight is, do we put the money in the budget as we're preparing it? Now, that's not a final decision because obviously anywhere through the budget process, that could be cut out. But we need guidance tonight as to this recommendation from the meadows committee, do you want us to start the budget process with the $65,000 in the budget? That's really the question for tonight.
Does anyone want to make a motion one way or another?
I'll make a motion to...
District-wide.
District-wide, I am right.
So, but we can make a recommendation for your motion.
I'll make the motion.
Different. So, Jonna, what would you recommend?
I could give my opinion, you can take it for what it's worth, I guess. But I would support putting money towards it. I think it's a, we need something in the temper, in the interim. Because whatever happens, wherever a football field goes, stays, bathrooms, it's a ton of money. It's a lot of work. It's gonna take time, a lot of research and figure out cost-effective measures and what the best options are. But the money towards the storage won't be lost. And it'll fix a lot of issues and protect the investment that the school and other clubs have made in their equipment. And I just, I also think it would just show the teams that use those fields that there's support for, I mean, after walking through there, it was pretty bombed. It is. And I just felt bad for the kids because there's one student there who played and, you know, he was kind of embarrassed. And so the least we could do is store the equipment properly. So I would support putting in the budget.
Karen, did you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put the $65,000 in the budget.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three opposed? Kyle, one. Were you opposed or four? Well, you gotta make a decision.
I mean, this is just us saying, "Okay, put it in, we can check it out."
Just to start the budget. It's gonna go through the whole budget process. Okay, so four to one to put it in. All right, there we go.
Thank you. And I think I've said this before, but I highly encourage that committee to engender community interest to get some sort of like, almost like a capital improvement plan specifically for athletic facilities. Because it seems like we just go all around and around and, I mean, I just really, that, some sort of strategic plan for athletic facilities needs to happen in this town. And it doesn't seem like it's happening. And I don't know if it's, who's gonna take that lead, if it's private or what. But, but something has to happen because this has been going on for a long while. I don't know how long we've owned that property. But it's been, I think, probably since I was a student here. We need to do something with it.
Just one quick point about that. I think maybe scheduling, so we had the walkthrough, but it was at four o'clock in the afternoon. I think that's difficult for a lot of people to make. So maybe, you know, as whoever this person's gonna be, maybe have a community thing where it's six o'clock at night or something where I think more people can attend, I think.
And perhaps that's something that these citizens that are interested in some sort of facility can plan on their own. And we can be a partner to that to open the facility. So that's my task, all of you. All right, next up is policy. I'm gonna motion that we take both first and second reads back to policy committee because we've had a good 60 days since we've looked at it. We have some feedback from G E A with the caveat that these first reads go to G E A as well for feedback. I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Extension? All right. Next public comment. Again, this is an opportunity for Guilford citizens and Gilman Tinsley.
I have to do a Spring Hill Circle. I just want to give you a little perspective on the meadows property. I've been in town for over 24 years. I don't know if you recall, you probably all wore diapers. But at one point, there was a vote to have high school down there and it got defeated. We were gifted, I believe, and there's research. I actually was on the meadows committee for many years. My husband was on it prior to that. There's probably binders like this about the meadows. I was at, when we used to have meetings, that before SB whatever, 10 or whatever, we couldn't have the meetings. We actually voted and paid $80,000 for a study on the meadows. Now, that must have been about probably 19 years with the idea of the football field going down there. And at the time when, or whenever the football stuff started happening, you know, for people, for football staff, it would never cost a penny for any Guilford person to pay for football. Well, of course, that didn't happen. I don't have any issue with that. I think it's, you know, good sport. But there's been a lot of money spent down there. And the original intent was, once the school got mixed, the original intent was for the football field. And at that time, there was a lot of discussion about putting a turf field in the village and that got mixed. But I think it's really important that mixed. But if, I think it's really important that you look at the history of what's gone on, because everything you talked about has been talked about already. The phases of this. We actually had a runaround years ago, but we had the knockoff Harlem Globetrotter team up here. It was a fundraiser. Well, I coordinated that. So there's been a lot going on. A lot of people have given time and materials, a lot of contractors in town, and never charged for it. So I would love, before I die, for something to come to fruition in this, whether we abandoned it, but you have to look at how we got that property. It was gifted by the Carrys. And my understanding at the time was it only could be used for school purposes. We used to talk about, can't we have people store things down there? Can we sell the hay? That was part of that. You couldn't make any money off of it. And I thought that was a sad thing, because we could have made tons of money off of that, you know, selling hay and different things to pay for various projects on that. So I guess the only thing I'm saying is, it sounds like you want to start the wheel all over. Well, the industry has been going for over 20 years on this. Look at what's been done. Look at, we have studies. We have, I think in the original 80,000 that was passed, were all kinds of like topographical studies and architectural studies and this and that. And I know you talk about, like, I don't know at what point that they put that, the classroom down there. I think they had, that, that never was there. That was never an intent. I think they just wanted to use that. So I think you should go back to the drawing board to see where you might be able to, if you have to eliminate that, where it can go back to, but that was not an original intent. So I just, I'm just saying, been there, been at meetings, been part of the committee, and you're always going to have the people that want the turf field, and the people that don't want it, and I feel bad for the sports teams, that, you know, they're putting their heart and soul in their team, and we as adults can't make a decision to support them or not support them. So look at what's been done. Save yourself, maybe a decade of time. I don't know.
Karen, I can tell you that it is written in the deed that is for school purposes.
Right, but if you don't do anything with it, I guess the question comes up, what can be done with it? Can it be gifted back? Can we get it off Guilford's back, or, you know, what's the story?
Yeah, it's all very specific in the deed.
So just, I'm only speaking as, you know, a little history here and what's been going through, because I served on the committee probably for like three years, Sue Allen's years, and I know a lot of people that have served on this committee over the years. Save yourself some time.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, I will close public comments. I get a motion to go into non-public. Motion to move into non-public, pursuant to RSA 91 dash A, protocol three, number number two, subsection C. Second motion. All in favor? All right, I guess we have to do a roll call. Kelly, yes?
Sam, more yes?
First one, yes.
Candina, yes?
Heyman, yes.
Yes. Take a quick break. We've got to get.
Croc TV.